We are going to begin this evening's board meeting and our order of business is called to order. The school board meeting of April 9th, 2019 is now called to order. The time is 6:01 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in a silent mode. As also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. The agenda can also be found at the district's website, www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the leadership tab and choose school board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest potential, personal potential, and the district's vision, which is to be a world-class school system. Prior to the start of this evening's board meeting, we've been enjoying the sounds of the Seahorse Corral. I made a comment. I like your seahorse. It looks really angry, though. Comprised of sixth and eighth grade students, they are relatively new ensemble at the Sanibel School that was founded two years ago by the school's music director, Mr. Gian Greco. Is that right?
Yes.
Since the ensemble was founded, Seahorse Corral has participated in a number of performances around the Sanibel community and at the Sanibel School, including their annual Veterans Day Assembly, fall and spring music showcases, and Seahorse Corral spectacular. This past February, the Seahorse Corral performed at the Music Performance Assessments, or NPAs, adjudication festival. They received an overall rating of excellent, with a superior rating on their site singing. The Seahorse Corral has had the privilege of presenting a performance at Disney Springs and Walt Disney World for the past two school years. At this time, the Seahorse Corral will perform "This Is Me," and we're all gonna cry. Get your tissues, from the Greatest Showman arrangement by Mack Hough. Thank you very much. At this time, we will take a brief pause to clear the performance area.
Madam Chair, I just want to remark. Got the opportunity last Friday to see Mr. Gian Greco actually in action out at the Sanibel School, but at that point, he was, when I saw him working, he was working with kindergarten students. So that was just really cool to see. But the administrative team talked about what a great job he and these kids do, so.
Yes. Okay, this evening's student representative from the school board's Student Advisory Committee is Allison Berno. Is that correct? Berno or Bernois?
It's Berno.
Berno. I got it right the first time. Okay. An eighth grader at Diplomat Middle School, where she takes an active role in the school's environment, participating in various clubs and activities. Ally serves as the Secretary of the National Junior Honor Society and participates in the Student Government Association, where she serves as vice president. Allison loves music and is a member of the Symphonic Jazz and Spirit Bands, playing trumpet and French horn, as well as singing in the chorus. She's a positive face of the school on the everyday wildcat news. Allison served on the Special Populations Youth Corps, a group of students that work for the benefit and welfare of adults in our community with special needs, and she aids in a special needs language arts class at school, helping students to achieve their goals. Allison has four cats and one puppy, and she aspires to one day become a veterinarian. Well, you'll have to, because the bills will be too expensive. Outside of school, Allison plays softball as a first baseman and is looking forward to playing in high school. Welcome, Allison. Okay, approval of the agenda. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, one acknowledgement, one recognition, public comment, consent, action items, which include two items in executive services, two items in academic services, five items in business services, and three items under human resources, one of which is good cause. Dr. Atkins, will you please provide an explanation of the good cause item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a recommendation to support the collective bargaining agreement with the Support Personnel Association of Lee County. It's important to get the provisions of this contract in place so we can begin adhering to our new contract moving forward. So that's why I brought it forth for good cause.
As presiding officer, I find there is good cause to add this one item to the agenda, as well as two items under information systems, seven items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Fisher and Second.
Second.
Ms. Jordan. Please record your vote. Is it going to... Is it? Oh, it's up there. Is it? Okay.
Seven zero.
Seven zero. It passes. Thank you. Ms. Patrico will deliver an invocation, after which Ms. Giovanni will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the invocation.
Lord God, we need your wisdom. You have given us a great school district founded on principles and truths. We need men and women who will honor you, trust you, and lead us once again back to you. We pray for servant leaders who care more about others than themselves. Give us leaders with discerning hearts and wise minds that model your character. Give them purity in their intentions. Raise up leaders with the greatest potential of godly leadership, those who can ease confusion and heal delusion. Amen.
Amen.
The cadet presenting the national colors tonight will be introduced by Command Sergeant Major Kevin E. Williams, Army Instructor from Ida S. Baker High School, JRO T C. Sergeant Major Williams served 32 years in the Army in various assignments, including Operation Iraqi Freedom and Desert Storm Desert Shield, as combat medic. This is Sergeant Major's Williams' sixth year at JRO T C instructor in the district. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. The national colors for the pledge of allegiance are presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Evelyn Gurey of Ida S. Baker High School. Cadet Gurey is a National Honor Society and junior leader. She maintains a 4.83 GPA and is an active member of JRO T C, serving as the program's battalion commander. Cadet Gurey is involved in Raiders and Color Guard, where she has competed at both the state and national levels. She strives for excellence in everything that she has done, and she has been our superior cadet for the last two years. Upon completion of graduation, Cadet Gurey is attending the University of Florida, where she will study Mandarin Chinese language culture. She has been accepted, and I wish her good luck this fall as she goes there. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You may be seated. At this time, our student representative, Allison Berno, will present the character education word and design for April.
The character word for April is integrity, adhering steadfastly to a personal sense of honorable and ethical behavior. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Gracie Gold, a ninth grade student at Estero High School.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, our recognitions will be the Florida Junior Thespians All-State Festival. Ms. Morgan, lead us in that.
As you know, it's warm down here. I would like to ask Dr. Douglas Santini, Executive Director of Fine Arts, to join me at the lectern. The Florida Junior Thespians All-State Festival for Drama Students was held February 1st, 2019 through February 3rd, 2019, at the Orange County Convention Center in Orlando. A large delegation of approximately 136 middle school thespians from 10 Lee County middle schools attended and earned all-state recognition and awards in various areas to include large group musical, small group musical, ensemble acting, duet musical, costume construction, one-act plays, publicity design, and more. As I call out the school, would everyone from that school please come forward to have a group picture taken? So the first school up is Calusa Middle. Next is Challenger Middle.
All right, right here, big smiles. One more. Thank you.
Cypress Lake Middle. Harns Marsh Middle School. Is there anyone here from Harns Marsh Middle? No? Okay. Lexington Middle School is unable to be with us tonight because they are preparing for their spring show. North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts. Yes. That's right. They don't need the board members, are they?
Big smiles. One more. Thank you.
And my apologies, I skipped over Golf Middle. So where is Golf Middle? So next is Oakhamack.
All right, right here, big smile. One more. Thank you.
Next is Oakhamack Middle. I guess they're not joining us this evening. Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School. And Veterans Park Academy for the Arts.
At this time, we'll take a brief recess, so that those who wish may leave, may do so now.
Like them to stay.
And thank you for coming, parents.
Thank you.
I am absolutely a frozen popsicle. I had goosebumps.
Based on that, um...
Oh, yeah. Wearing her?
Yes.
And doing it like? And you're doing it in my home?
Yes, ma'am. Gosh, I feel so unprepared.
I have a headache, this has accounted for it.
Oh, do you not, do you have?
Nothing. And I just bought some of that.
Should wear one. When we come back up here, you can slip them on, we'll call everybody's doing something. Who's got her little thing?
Oh, do you have something? She carries, I think she's wearing an aspirin or a wort.
Butt stuff thing?
Yeah, that's true.
Should think I would put it in my purse when I took my wallet out, my purse will pay for it.
I had an 800-milligram ibuprofen.
Yeah, she's here. Yeah, she's here. She was out in the hallway talking to Kelly, I think.
It was in with other pills.
Huge, there's nothing else in there.
I know. Well, I had others in it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. She means in that pill.
It did mean in the pill.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, we are ready to begin again. Our next thing on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Dotick, please address the agenda item of public comment.
Sure, our school board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the cards submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Gittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition, booing, hissing, clapping, shouting, cursing, or disrespectful comments are prohibited. The time per speaker, at least at this point, Madam Chair, is three minutes, because I have 15 cards.
Okay, thank you. We offer the opportunity to those who may be unfamiliar with public comment process to raise their hands and provide their name. The blue card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. If you did not complete a blue card, anyone on my left that would like to? Okay. Make sure that you complete it at the end. Please state your name. Jamie Michael. Anyone on my right? That did not complete a blue card? Yes, sir, in the back? Okay, Ed Bolter?
Another one.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Lillian Doth?
Goth.
Goth. Okay, Lillian Goth.
Okay.
And just make sure that you have a card completed, Lillian, before you go, okay? Anyone else? Okay. Alright, then I guess we are ready to begin, Mr. Dotick.
Sure, David Martin.
Good evening, Dr. Atkins and members of the board. My name is David Martin, and I'm an art educator at Bonita Springs Elementary and the coordinator for Designs and Dreams. And this evening, I'm here to discuss the impact art has on communities. Months ago, Dr. Santini brought together art educators and the community leaders and challenged us to advocate for the arts. Because of that meeting, we developed a vision of cultivating a connected community through the arts, a mission to establish and nurture a connection in which the arts are a fundamental and organic component of the whole county culture, and goals to improve the networking system between schools and community professionals. Because of that meeting, the Bonita Springs Student Arts Festival was founded. And I would like to invite all of you to attend the Bonita Springs Student Arts Festival at the historic Shangri-La Springs from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on April 17th and 18th. You'll witness firsthand the impact art has on the community, and most importantly, on our students. Students from the five Bonita Springs Schools will showcase the visual and performing arts. And we hope that you come and visit us. And the artist and professor, Kevin McCartney, performed a study, and he found that the performing of visual arts builds healthier communities and an overall healthier individual. The arts create interpersonal ties and promotes volunteering, increases opportunities for self-expression and enjoyment, and reduces delinquency in high-risk youth. Cognitively and expression and... cognitively and psychologically, the arts increase a sense of individual efficacy and self-esteem, and improves individual self-belonging, a sense of self-belonging or attachment to their community. When participating in the arts, students and community members benefit interpersonally and socially, building individual social networks and enhanced ability to work with others and communicate ideas. The arts create social capital by getting people involved, by connecting organizations to each other, and by giving participants experience in organizing and working with local governments and nonprofits. So, Board and Dr. Atkins, thank you for listening. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mitchell McCowen.
Hello, I'm Mitchell McCowen, Cape Coral resident, 23 years. I've got three kids, nine, six, and two. I assume you guys saw my Facebook poll the other day about end-school choice, where 75% of the people voted on the poll that they would like to. Meanwhile, much of that 25% remaining, or their main thing was about the high schools, which I agree, we should keep the high schools in school choice. As a start, there are many young children walking and standing in the dark, which is not safe. As well, many of them riding bus, they're on the bus for, some of them for an hour and a half, going to the bus at 5:04 in the morning, I believe, the first stop is. So, my question is, what are we going to do to ensure we, the people's wishes are met on this? Is there any way we can get this done? Research shows that if we were to end school choice in just elementary and middle schools, it would save the schools around 20 to possibly up to $40 million a year, which that money could be used to make the so-called "not-good" schools even better, more equal to the better schools. The whole state of Michigan dropped school choice a few years back, why can't Lee County? I have heard that some organizations might try to sue us if we try to change school choice. I feel that we, the people, have the right to know what organizations are, although after the future failure of our school choice has brought us, I believe that they might not sue us after all. So, please be open, honest with us, we, the people, that elected you. Another way to make our schools better and safer is with the money being received from the half-cent increase, which was projected to be around $450 million over the next 10 years, but in January's numbers, it looks like it's going to be around $750 million or better, it would be a positive thing. So, as long as the money is being used properly, I see no reason why we can't have more money for our schools to make them better and safer. As for the $22 million that was found, why don't you explain to the people why that money can't be used to make our schools safe? I also find a lot of things in schools being political. A lot of the money into the board, I'm sorry, I'm just going to skip over that. But lastly, I just want to leave another thing on school safety that, um, we have the Drag Queen Story Hour sweeping the nation, and I would like to see that kept out of our schools. You know, that's, they just found two people convicted rapists, and we just should not have that in our schools either. Yeah. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Terry Johns.
Thank you, Board members. Dr. Atkins, let's talk about the school bus safety. That 1989, my cousin Kerry Hitzing was killed by a hit-and-run driver. And here we are, 30 years later. All of this money that could have been saved from school choice could have already been put in. There's seven, what, 7,000 bus stops in Lee County for the schools? Then why aren't there 7,000 streetlights and 7,000 sidewalks to those bus stops? You know, and it's time to abolish school choice, that alone would save 25 million to 40 million that could be keeping these kids safe. And now, here you've got the blood on your hands of three more kids that have been killed. How many more is it going to take before something is done to save these children? How many more kids are going to have to die before something is done? You know, and we're here tonight to hold you accountable for the job that you do, because you work for us. We pay you. And if you can't do the job that we're paying you to do, well, it's time to have every one of you removed. And I've already reached out to Governor DeSantis. And, you know, I love my new governor that I hired, and I hope that he does, with the Lee County School District and the board members, exactly what he did to the Southwest Florida Water Management. Because it's beyond time to save these kids. And you know that I took my daughter out of public school to keep her safe over two years ago, when I stood right here talking about kids being safety with their safety. So, yes, it's time to make the change, and that change is now, and we are going to hold you accountable. Not just today, every day. This already should have been done. 30 years you've had, what is the excuse? Where my aunt left off after she fought it for many years? I'm still fighting for it, and I'm going to keep on, because these kids are the future of this country, and it's high time that you started caring about how they are treated and their safety. And if you don't think so, each one of you should get on the school bus and ride for about a week and see what the things that we see as parents. And I thank God every day that I took my daughter out of public school when I did. She probably wouldn't even be alive right now if I hadn't, because nobody did anything to save her. And if you don't think so, check the documentation in your school computer, your system computer. I know for a fact it's there, because my attorney has the information. Thank you.
Yep, excuse me, yep, Ram Dervahanian.
Hi, yep, from Dervahanian, Lee I Acres, Florida. Madam Chair, keep up the good work, I think you're trying hard. My comments are, I have a few here. I hope the governor's pushing this Common Core deal, let's get rid of it. We had a member last time that wavered on it, didn't go for it, then against it. Let's, Superintendent Atkins, let's get something going. When it's ready to go, let's have it going. Let's not delay it. This is crap, this Common Core. Gun safety in the schools, I'm disappointed. I believe somebody that can handle a gun and is qualified. Your blood, their blood's on you. Kids get killed, you don't want somebody there with a gun, so think about it. Street lighting. I've been to the lighting board meetings, trying to get streetlights on Leonard Boulevard, because it's darker than hell. And there's a lot of school bus pickups there. At the meetings, apparently, the lighting companies are building priority, this is what they say, they're building priority on school stops. Now, there's a million, I hear different, there's a million to $2 million, next year they think $3 million for streetlights. So, let's get on them. The lighting companies say they're trying to do something. Leonard Boulevard, I think I seen some new lights up there. I don't know, it's because of me bitching about it, but something's been getting done. And the last thing I got to say is I want term limits on school boards. I hope the legislators in Tallahassee vote for that. You people have been up here too long, some of you, but others are new. But hopefully, we get better streetlights. Hopefully, our kids are safe when they wait for buses. Thank you.
John Jacobs.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Atkins. My name is John Jacobs, I'm president of Northwest Cape Neighborhood Association. I represent over 1,200 members who are taxpayers of the Northwest Cape area. Considering recent events in the Cape regarding the safety of our schoolchildren, there are many changes being examined to improve their safety, including additional sidewalks, additional street lighting, and adding benches at school bus stops. These changes are currently being considered by the City of Cape Coral, which I commend them for. Expecting our children to walk the bus stops during predawn times in the street with flashlights is a complete disregard for their safety. Also, expecting children to cross a major roadway like Burnstour Road in total darkness to get to their schools is pure insanity. Additionally, how does it make sense to have school bus stops on Burnstour Road? Here's a picture of the darkness of the child that just got hit the other day on Burnstour Road, completely dark. And because he lives less than a two-mile distance for school busing, he has to walk to Mariner every day. Many other students do also. In the opinion of many of the Northwest Cape residents, there is a need to be changes adopted by the school board of Lee County. The first change is, we would recommend reducing the school of choice offerings. It has created a logistics nightmare, there's an unnecessary amount of school bus traffic, there's an unnecessary amount of school bus stops. It has also created an enormous budgetary cost for the school district, of which could be better allocated to teacher salaries. Some of the school offerings from the Northwest Cape area are a 13- to 15-mile bus trip each way. Offering two to three schools, which are geographically closest to the student's home, is a more reasonable plan. This is a listing right here of my area and the schools that are offered. 14 elementary schools, seven middle schools, and five high schools. That's way too many. It's not necessary. The second change is figuring out how to stop the predawn school bus stop pickups. In the Cape with a lack of sidewalks and streetlights, your scheduling methods are a major contribution to these unsafe conditions to our children. The third change is providing school bus transportation to students that don't meet the two-mile minimum that would have to cross Burnsthor Road. It's like a Speedway there. Finally, do not schedule bus stops on Burnsthor Road. It has no legitimate crosswalks or stoplights. All vehicles are traveling at least 60 miles an hour. After reading Dr. Atkins' letter regarding this major issue, the perception is there's no sense of urgency in solving this child safety problem. Our hopes are that the school board realizes the urgency and seriously considers these recommendations for our residents. Thank you.
Marvin Getz.
I'm here to, Dr. Atkins, board members, I'm here on behalf of the guest teachers at Lee County. There are three points I want to bring out tonight. Point number one, after almost a year of me complaining, we are having a training program for all substitute teachers this summer. So I want to thank Human Resources for planning a training program for all my substitutes. Thank you. Also, we need to have some sort of an insurance policy to cover any injuries if a teacher, a substitute, a guest teacher receives a permanent injury. An example, I received a note today from Houston, Texas, from the teacher who was shot last year, about 11 months ago. She, her workman's comp covered everything, but it only covers so long. She has to go to physical therapy and training to get her body back in shape to walk. And there is no insurance coverage. I believe it would be very little cost to the district when you take the sheer numbers involved. Yes, workman's comp covers that, but it doesn't cover a permanent injury to a substitute teacher. Finally, at the current time, we are undergoing the substitute teacher, guest teacher, silver apples. We are now in the process of selecting. They are currently being nominated by teachers in every school building. Last year, we had 680 nominated. We only select four: one elementary, middle, high school, and special need. Joining in committee are three administrators, three full-time teachers, four substitutes, and our chairperson. So I want to thank you, and I look forward to seeing everybody that's here in the audience. If it'd be nice if they turned out on May 21st for our meeting, when the board will recognize the nominees. Thank you very much.
I'll hold him up. Good evening, Superintendent and Board. Lunavara, retired teacher and Cape resident. I once again want to ask you for my extra half a cent on the roundup of the sales tax increase, on the odd numbers. I'd like my half a cent back. I don't want it at the state or wherever. I have heard nothing. I want to address the tragic death of Leila Aikens. Seems like many Lee Countians see us, Cape Coral residents, as a bunch of old grouchy retirees with an authoritarian police department. The outcry of the city of Cape Coral was heartwarming by the people. The death is really Lee County's district's fault. We have asked for bus reform time and time again, and it falls on deaf ears. Fact, going back to 2010, with former Bob Chamonix, school board member, asked to do away with school choice. He said, "School choice has not improved academic performance. The system has failed," Chamonix said. "We should use that money to equalize all programs in all schools, instead of burning it up on transportation." And I have a sheet from Duval County who outsources, they move more students and save money and have less bus stops, and they have a magnet program, not a school choice. So privatization, you need it. We've suggested it. It falls on deaf ears. I demand that our half-cent sales tax be used for safety and security for handy huts at all school bus stops, just like the city has. Why build new schools, buy more land? You have plenty of land in your portfolio than when we could put these huts up for the children. That would certainly help. Lastly, I think it's, with all due respect, I think, Dr. Atkins, it's time for you to consider stepping down. We need a superintendent who's going to be open to new ideas, and will have new ideas from out of our district. In the last 15 years, we've had 13 years of homegrown superintendents. It's time for a change from somebody out there. You have your platinum parachute and most superintendents the last five years in this district, so you've done really well. Here's the pictures of the bus huts. I can leave them with you. The audience can't see them. I brought you a present, and I'll give it to Susan, their flashlights. Little flashlights, so you can go out and meet the children on their night vigil and wait for year-round daylight savings time. You think we've got a problem now, because they want to do the tourists over children's lives? Thank you.
Sir, your time's started.
Chairman Gittens. It's a pleasure to see you exactly where you're sitting and with the authority you have. Mary Fisher. Melissa. Jim and Ellie. Debbie Jordan. Yes. Kathleen Morgan. And Chris. It's good to be here. I come representing the AMVETS Post 81 of North Fort Myers. On the auspices of Kevin Butwell, my commander, Scott Brown, my vice commander, and Peggy Mills. She's the president of the AMVETS Post 81 Auxiliary. I'm here to help the situation as best we can. It's the National Americanism Contest that I'm promoting with our Post Veterans 81. The contest consists of three grade levels. And we have flag coloring for grades K and I. We have the posters for second, third, fourth, and fifth grades. And then we have the various essays for the, from sixth grade to 12th grade. Now, everybody in Lee County that has their children in school is possible to be a part of this. I mean, it's parochial schools, private schools, public schools, anybody that has, boy scouts, girl scouts, anyone else, and homeschools. So what we do is, we are the ones that fund three things. We ask the people, and the ones that are participating and their winners, the first-place winner gets a plaque, and they get a certificate, a visa certificate. The second and third place winners get the plaque, not the plaque, but the certificate.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you. Kevin Daly.
Good evening, Chair Gittens, board members, Dr. Atkins, and Mr. Dodick. Kevin Daly, I'm the president of the Teachers Association of Lee County, but I'm also the proud parent of two students at South Fort Myers High School, who most days have to wait at a bus stop. And so I rise here in support of safer bus stops, and I think my members and the employees of the Support Association and the employees of all the district believe in the safety of students at the bus stops, as well as in the school buildings. And so I emailed Chair Gittens late last week about perhaps putting together some ideas to find ways to make the bus stops as safe as they can be. I mean, I think we're dealing with multi-jurisdictions here. I think the school board has some responsibility. I think the county has some responsibilities in some aspects, and the individual cities do as well. So I think we should sit down and really look at the bus stops and perhaps develop a program and use all of our collective, the power of the parents, the power of the employees, and the power of the district, to move forward a partnership and a plan to do something like adopt a bench or adopt a stop, where local businesses are able to adopt that stop and provide some of the funding necessary to make it as safe as it can be. So I look forward to hearing your response, Chair Gittens. I unfortunately have to scoot right away. I have a daughter who's been at her work site for 45 minutes longer than she should have been. But it's okay. She has Wi-Fi, food, money, and shelter, so everything a 15-year-old girl needs to be safe. So thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you all and working with you guys to kind of partner and leverage our collective power to make school bus stops as safe as they can possibly be. Thanks.
Don Armstrong.
For the record, my name's Don Armstrong. I'm a proud parent of two great eighth graders who will be moving on to North Fort Myers High School. So what I wanted to talk to you guys about was, not only am I a parent, but I'm also a former board member, as you guys remember. So in 2011, Dr. Atkins, you was in administration. And I brought up school bus stop safety. Lights at our bus stops. I went to your office and even talked to you directly about them back then. Putting reflective vests on the backpacks of these students. I had several meetings in Cape Coral over this. Ms. Fisher, I believe you even went to one of the meetings with me. These issues back then, we was being proactive and trying to resolve these issues. We knew there was a problem then. Eight years later, we're here because of a tragedy. That's not the only tragedy. The tragedy is why we didn't do anything about it long before it got to this point. This is our future and our kids. And it's up to you to come up with solutions and ideas. And since no one here seems to be thinking that it's that important at this time, there's plenty of ladies out here who are going to let you know different. It's important. It's our kids. The other thing I wanted to address to you is neighborhood schools and school choice. You heard that there was abundant people out there who was for neighborhood schools. I've suggested to go back to elementary and middle schools as neighborhood schools, leave high schools for school choice, which would save on transportation. Our students would not be standing out at the dark. You know, you guys have to remember something. On your chart, organizational chart, it says "we, the public" at the very top. You work for us, and you need to do something. And start looking at the school choice, the neighborhood schools, not in a few years now. Because this is our kids. It's our education system. It's our school district. It is not yours. Remember that. Because if you don't remember that, I promise you, people right now are talking about when it's time for election, they'll remember it then. Thank you.
Randy Romanoff.
No, this is my daughter's. She said to thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay, just hand it to her. Thank you. I have her name here. Thanks. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Phew.
Your time's ticking, so.
Okay. Good evening. This is my third time speaking in public, and every time I think it's going to get easier, it never does. I'm pretty sure most of you know who I am by now, but I'm going to reintroduce myself. My name is Randy Romanoff, and I am one of the founders for Lights for Leila. Two Mondays ago, my friend Kathleen Aiken lost her eight-year-old daughter, Leila, in a tragic accident that could and should have been prevented. Although there was one driver that literally ran his pickup truck over an eight-year-old little girl, we are all at fault. The school board, transportation, city officials, and us as teachers, parents, and our entire community. Terry Johns stated at the last city council meeting that we all have the blood of Leila on our hands, and we do. For nearly two weeks, I have asked myself how I, as a mother to four, have not taken this matter more serious. And I'm asking you, as the people that represent over 90,000 students in our district, how you have allowed the safety of our children to fall so low on your to-do list. Since January 1st, 2019, we have had three school bus stop-related accidents, with two being fatal. I don't know about you, but to us, that is three too many. Since Lights for Leila has started, we have raised a large sum of money. We have over 1,400 followers on our Facebook page and over 100 daily messages. Over 50% of our messages are from either parents scared to send their kids to the bus or parents reaching out about their child being scared to go to school. The future of this county is scared to go to school. It seems to us that the school board is just being careless. Leila Aiken's mom and my good friend Kathleen reached out to transportation and the school board to have her twins' bus stop changed, just to be told that it cannot be done and that it's district policy. To force two nine-year-old boys to stand at the bus stop where they watch their sister die is district policy. If you ask us, district policy needs to be changed, and Lights for Leila is a force to be reckoned with. Lights for Leila is determined to not just put benches and lights at all bus stops, we are determined to change the way things are done. We are joining together as a society. Driving down the road, you'll notice handmade benches, and a community that was once all strangers are now working together, and we're taking a stand and writing "you're wrong." With so many options between changing school choice to only having three or four schools to choose from, or starting elementary school times later, or putting lighting at all bus stops, this never should have happened. The death of both Alana Tamplin and Leila Aiken should rest on all of our consciences. Whatever we need to do as Lights for Leila, we will do. We're just a group of moms on a mission, and this is just the beginning. Thank you so much.
Jerry Ware. No clapping, please, sorry. Just can't, Jerry Ware.
Good evening.
Hold on, Jerry.
Board, Dr. Atkins. I had the opportunity...
I had the opportunity last week of going along with 350 other ladies to meet the legislature in Tallahassee to address issues that concern our community. Tonight, I'm going to be brief because one of them is of urgency to me, and that is because on Thursday, the Senate Appropriations Committee is scheduled to hear Senate Bill 730, 7030, allowing the arming of teachers. I pleaded with Senator Ben Aquistow and all of the rest of them as I was there. I too have been a teacher, and I said, "If I had wanted to be a policeman, I would have gone to school to be that." And I'm asking for consideration and asking you all to please let them before this last chance, because it's headed to the finishing line, that you all call and get others to say, "Please do not arm our teachers." The responsibility is enough. We're going to lose more teachers. As you begin to put more responsibilities on them and put them in prejudiced situations and situations that will prejudice their lives, it's not safe for them. And I'm really begging you all to please get on the phone and ask them to not pass Senate Bill 7030. Thank you.
Diana Girado.
Good evening. My name is Diana Girado. I am the president and co-founder of a nonprofit called Streets Alive of Southwest Florida. Our mission is fostering a livable community through activities, advocacy, education, and service. We have been in Lee County area and serving Southwest Florida since 2012, and some of the things that we have done are in line with bicycle and pedestrian safety and other activities. We have worked closely with some of the schools in Lee County. We have brought forward some issues to the local governments about conflicts around the schools where we don't even have school zone, slow speeds. And those are issues that are outside the district's responsibility. I understand the, um, school board, the half percent tax, is dedicated specifically for some things, but I also understand the government responsibility to step up and take action in this. The legal, the Cape Coral that has stepped up in this issue of bus stop safety is outstanding. We have been bringing forward these issues with other local governments for many years, and they go unheard, pretty much. We have issues of infrastructure that are not just the responsibility of the school district. This is a wide community issue, not a school district-only issue. And a lot of times, community do not understand that. I understand your responsibility, and I understand the government responsibility, because I worked in government for over 15 years. My background is in architecture and urban design, so I know that there are some things that are urgent and some things that are costly, but there are other alternatives that are low-hanging fruit. I'm going to share something that kind of made me think today. So in Northport, this sex offender, someone rode across in front of his driveway, sex offender. So it was a big deal. So the Northport Public Works went and painted that over. That was faster than we could have had Lee County authorities on any jurisdiction going out there where the school board, uh, school bus stops are and putting some reflecting, reflective paint. This is not the responsibility of just the school board. So some of the things that I want to bring forward to you is to request the crackdown on distracted driving and reach out to your local legislature so the law is not watered down. That's another issue we have. And all the other safety, the cutbacks on the impact fees, that's taken away from infrastructure that goes for the entire community. And this is not just a school board district issue. So when these things are being spoken about at the local governments, you guys, you have to be at the table. You have to be informed because this will impact the school board. Thank you.
Christine Kobe.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Christine Kobe, and I'm a violence prevention educator with our local Certified Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Center Act. I'm also a full-time teacher at Lee High Senior High School. Prior to teaching in a traditional classroom, I spent over a decade going into health classrooms at the middle and high school levels as a guest speaker. I would spend a couple of weeks at each school facilitating a curriculum on healthy relationships. This curriculum addressed risk and protective factors associated with being a victim or perpetrator of intimate partner violence. These factors have been identified by the Center for Disease Control. The data that I collected each year proved that the programming was successful, but the domestic violence centers lost funding at the state level, which decreased the number of schools and students that I could do programming with. I missed working with students, so I hopped onto the career change route and became a teacher. I began as an English teacher for 12th grade and presented the eight-session curriculum to two of my classes using English Language Arts and Reading Standards. My data showed that the positive change increased from about 25% to 75%, and I assumed it was the age that I was working with or that it was simply a fluke. This year, I am teaching critical research and thinking with ninth-grade students. I stretched the material out over an entire nine-week quarter, again utilizing ELA and reading standards, but also incorporating technology, social media campaigns, and teaching my students how to analyze and evaluate the data themselves. And that is why I'm here this evening. Stretching out the material and adding additional content to enhance learning improved the positive behavior change to about 85%. Although students enjoy having guest speakers, they predict that the content is taught to them by their own teacher that they have a trusting and connecting relationship with, then the impact will be more effective. Incorporating a nine-week session on healthy relationships is not my only suggestion. Throughout this year, I have covered many topics related to violence prevention and social emotional learning. We've covered empathy, bullying, bystander behavior, and respect, all while being culturally relevant and inclusive to our LGBTQ students and students of color. I'm suggesting a district-wide violence prevention initiative. I would like to let the board know that I have the experience as well as the academic credentials to increase this level of impact district-wide and am available to assist in any way. This includes supporting our teachers with materials, coaching, professional development, as well as program development and evaluation. I will continue to be at Lee High. Let me know if you need me.
Tolyne Hopkins.
Good evening. My name is Taylin Hopkins. I am a student at Lee High Senior High School. I am speaking on behalf of Ms. Kobe today. One in four teens is abused by a partner. What does abused mean? Most students can't answer correctly because they are educated on these topics by their TVs and social media. TV and social media are for entertainment, so they aren't accurate convictions of how it really is. So the mindset is things like that can't happen to young people like us. Before I was introduced to the Healthy Relationships curriculum, I can say I was a blank slate. I didn't know what it meant to hold control over another by using both mental and physical force. Healthy relationships include having an understanding of how our own bodies work and keeping them healthy. I didn't know about the type of STDs and STIs a person could get, or how to prevent getting them and transferring them. Healthy relationships extend beyond romantic partnerships. They include our families, our friends, and the ones we sit next to in class. We all learned about slavery in school, but we didn't know that it was still going on in the form of human trafficking, and we didn't know about the types of racism. If we want to help prevent violence, we have to know this information, because knowledge is power, and without it, we are left vulnerable and at risk of becoming a victim or perpetrator of it. We need a violence prevention curriculum through high school. High school is a time of change and negative emotions. We don't get it. Our parents don't going to teach it, and many times, they don't get it either. So if we are misinformed, who is to blame? With a curriculum like this that teaches us the stuff our parents have to tiptoe around or pretend to know, it can make us better and more prepared. I believe we need a teacher to teach us this. We can't rely on our parents to do it. They don't want to get involved because it's awkward, and we were taught to avoid awkward situations. We need a teacher, one that doesn't just throw stuff together and say, "Hey, don't do this," or "Hey, don't do that." A teacher who gives us their time to properly educate and inform us on why we shouldn't do this and how it can affect us for the rest of our lives. Or a teacher that teaches us how to help students or others who are being abused and need help. That teaches us how to help students who need help. It's empowering to help us make, it's empowering us to help make us, to help make healthy and safe decisions. We grow up learning that if a person is crying or going through something, to help them, show empathy, but no one ever mentioned how. We are left to figure that out for ourselves, to wipe away their tears, hug them, make them stop crying. But that's not how we need to do this. To have a healthy relationship, you need to have empathy for another person and try to understand them. Empathy has been a major underlying theme of violence prevention topics we've discussed. That's why we need a teacher that can create a bond with the student. They are able to open up and communicate with students, which works the other way around as well, allowing students to confide in that same teacher with the trust that they'll be heard and not judged by their questions or curiosities. Nothing is as simple in black and white as I originally thought. I know more, and now I can help, and now I know the people around me better. The world is changing, and the students deserve to know so that they can be part of this change. Thank you.
Mr. Dotick, what was the name of the last speaker?
Her name is Taylin Hopkins. Jamie Michael.
Hello, I'm Jamie Michael. I'm president of Support Personnel Association, and I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Dotick, for allowing me to speak this evening, and also want to thank you for agreeing to the Good Cause item. We have negotiated in good faith with the district. We thank the negotiating team of the district. I thank my negotiating team, who represent each departments or elected director, to represent those departments. It's not always easy. We don't always agree, but we do come to consensus when we use interest-based, and we appreciate everything the board has done this year in coming forward with money. Even the additional halves, half a percent, doesn't seem like a lot, but it'll mean a lot to a lot of people. Thank you.
Ed Bolter. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. My name is Ed Bolter. I'm here representing the downtown club, the Rotary in Cape Coral. We've already presented in front of the city council. I got to tell you, y'all are in a tough, tough position. This is going to take a multi-pronged wheel effort to get done. These ladies right here, they've already done a magnificent job getting the fundraising started for the family. My club is interested in taking it a step further. We're looking to fund, build, deploy the first 200 benches in Cape Coral. We would start with the kids that go to school at the, at O'Dark 30. We would get those deployed first. We've already talked to LCEC about deploying reflective tape on the poles that are at those stops. From our understanding, there's 420-some-odd stops that are already illuminated. Well, let's add some reflective tape. We would also add reflective tape to the leading edges of the recycled plastic benches. These are unconditionally guaranteed for 20 years. They're, as I said, they're recycled plastic, and they're on concrete slabs. So you'll have a, depending on the piece of property, up to a six-by-six-foot slab for a two-foot bench. So there's additional concrete for other kids to sit on that don't fit on the bench. The bench is six feet long, and like I said, it has a six-by-six-foot slab. We know, looking at the circumstance it is, Cape Coral, and their swales, that that's a drainage for their water. So it won't work everywhere, but it will work in a lot of places, and this is a start. That's all we can do as an organization, is help kickstart this thing, and we're prepared to, we've already got pledges for most of the money for the first 200, and if we, if you want to use us as your test tube dummies, we're good for it. Rotary is known, our Rotary Club is known for raising the money and getting the job done. So all we ask is that you let us get started without too many obstructions, and we're prepared to move forward. Thank you.
Lillian Goff. Lillian, pull that down. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, my name is Lillian Goff. I am 10 years old, and I go to Patriot Elementary. My mom is Randy Romanoff and is the founder of Lights for Leila. On Monday, March 25th, 2019, my good friend Leila Aiken was killed in an accident in North Cape Coral while she was waiting for her bus. She was just two years younger than me. My mom and Kathleen Aiken, Leila's mom, have been friends for years, and I have known Leila since my kindergarten year. Fortunately for me and my siblings, my mom can drive us to school every day, but that wasn't the case for my friend. Riding to the bus should be safe, walking to the bus should be safe, and waiting for the bus should be safe. Leila dying on Monday never should have happened. We're here today hoping that we can make a change. Monday shouldn't be the reason why I'm not safe walking to the bus. Thank you.
That's it for the speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Lillian, you are very brave. Thank you for doing that. Looking at the public comment, the following individuals were all speaking about the bus safety, and that was Mr. McGowan, Terry Johns, John Jacobs, Lou Navara, Kevin Daly, Randy Romanoff, Ms. DiValdo, I believe, I don't know if I pronounced it correctly. Let's see, who else? Mr. Bolter, and of course, and of course, Lillian. First of all, I want to invite all of you to this location on Tuesday, April 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And here in the boardroom, we will be having a town hall about bus safety, in case anyone didn't know. Superintendent, do you want to give any more details on that for us?
Well, it is an opportunity for the public come out, to come out to, down here to the school board building and also to provide input. So the majority of that would be a listening session, but also an opportunity for Q and A. So I would echo that. Thank you for bringing that up, Madam Chair.
Okay. And some of the, I mean, I know I have, and I think my fellow board members have all received emails and phone calls and wonderful suggestions that people have to make safety better for our children. So, you know, come with some of those ideas and thoughts, listen to what is already going on, and then add or ask questions to that. That will be your opportunity to see how we can collaborate and work together. Thank you, Mr. Bolter, for that wonderful opportunity as well. And please make sure that you and some of your fellow members are here for that meeting on the 16th. I think that would be a good idea. Mr. Martin, is he still here, from the art? Thank you so much. The arts are so, so important, and we really appreciate the impact and look forward to your program that's coming up. Make sure we get the details. Mr. Darbehim, I never can say your name properly, but Mr. Darbehim. On the Common Core strategies, several of us, most of the board, went to Tallahassee last week, and we met with the Chancellor of Education. Fortunately, we had like a 30, 45-minute meeting with him, and it was very good, and he discussed the future plans for the changing Common Core to the next generation strategies. I always say it wrong. The, um, so, next generation.
Standards.
Standards, okay. So they are rolling out a, an application, an app online, that you can go on, educators can go on, and, and parents or whatever, and look at the actual standards that are out there. You can make comments. You can make comments as to whether you think it's a good idea, or if this should be changed or whatever. So they really are putting it out there for comment and input from the public. And Ms. Patrica, I'm gonna ask you at the end during your comments, can you address this issue some more, if you have some more comments about that?
Sure.
But it was a very good meeting with him, and we are hoping, and we have begged and asked for the actual rollout to happen here in Lee County in September, where they're rolling out the actual standards, and we'll let you know more about that later. Also, one of the things that you brought up was about the gun safety, and someone else brought that up as well. A week ago, Monday, we had a meeting right here with law enforcement and the board. We had a workshop to discuss safety and security in Lee County with the law enforcement officers as well as the board. One of the things we all came to a decision about unanimously is that law enforcement, neither the board, wanted to go any further with arming teachers. And when we were in Tallahassee, that was one of the things that had come up as well, and it was, we talked about the fact of whether it's an optional thing. I also want to say, when we looked at the, at the bill during our workshop, and we worked through each segment of it of things that we had to do, and basically, as a district, we're already doing the majority of what is being requested or required of us in that bill. So we are ahead of the curve on a lot of the things that they're asking, but as a joint unit with law enforcement, we are not for arming teachers, so that should help to quell those fears. Mr. Getz, thank you for all that you do with our guest teachers, and that's excellent to hear about the, the training that they will be receiving, and your silver apple, and good luck with that, and hopefully some of us will be able to attend. Let's see, bus safety, bus safety. I think I've pretty much, oh, Christine, Ms. Colby, and Kalen. Kalen, excellent speaker, my dear. You, you would really do well talking about this program anywhere. You do a great job, and thank you, Ms. Colby, for being her teacher. The program, we talk a lot about mental health and the importance of it, and Superintendent, would you mind mentioning or maybe passing the idea on to Dr. Creel and Lori Brooks to see if there is any possibility, or can you address that?
Yes, I'd be happy to do, do so, and then also, you know, and, and I'll also talk to Mr. Parfit and pass Taylor Hopkins' name on to Human Resources. Maybe she wants to be a teacher. I was impressed, you know?
Oh, yes.
Because we, we certainly need teachers with that kind of passion, so, thank you. And Madam Chair, once you get finished, I can come back to some of the bus safety and provide a little bit more information about things that we are doing moving forward.
Okay. Ms. Ware, on the state bill 7030, I think that, that, what we were saying about our law enforcement and our board joint meeting kind of covers things that we are doing and will be doing with that. I believe, I hope I haven't left anyone out, and I, I think that's it. Superintendent, if you want to go ahead?
Okay, just, just some of the things that are going on. Of course, a number of the items have been mentioned. We, we did have a safety meeting with the board where we invited law enforcement in, and I think that was a good discussion. And then moving forward to the town hall that we're going to have next week, we've also invited other municipalities in to join us in that one, so hopefully we'll get some folks to, to come in and, and help us with that particular meeting. We are going over, some of us are going over to a school bus stop stakeholders group meeting. It's the first one with the city, transportation, City of Cape Coral and Transportation Safety and Security in the School District. I'll be going over there. We also will follow it up with a meeting with the county, which I mentioned before, where we will also discuss this issue along with other things. And then, you know, I think moving forward, we're continuing to try to work with our other, the county and other municipalities on this very issue with school bus safety and looking at the bus stops, because I would agree with everyone, this is a multifaceted issue that involves many stakeholders, and, and hopefully, you know, we have opportunity that comes out of, of several recent tragedies where this, this community can come together around making bus stops and other areas in our community safer for students. So I am glad that, to see that we're moving forward in those areas. When it comes to school choice, that came up, and school choice is, again, is a very complex issue. One of the things that, that we are doing as a school district, which most of you are aware, is we're moving forward and trying to move away from the, the zone system that we currently have and move to a proximity-based student assignment system. Now, it's not going to ever be a total neighborhood school, but we'll come very close, because we now have school clusters. You know, if you look around, like Skyline and Patriot and Challenger and Pelican is close by, and Trafalgar Elementary and Gulf Elementary are very close, and meanwhile, Cape Coral Elementary is way down in the Cape, lot of kids around there, but no schools. So you, it's, it's very difficult to have a, a pure neighborhood system, but you can move toward a proximity-based system where a parent and students have the opportunity to, to select five or six schools close in proximity to their home, and, and then develop the transportation system around that. We wanted to, because there were some concerns about eliminating choice at the high school level, so we are moving first at the elementary level. We were in the process, really, of engaging a, an outside consulting firm who had experience with this issue when we, we had our transition in our operations team, but once we reestablished that, I think we can go right back to that issue. Mr. Davis is, has been working as a part of that, because there's some significant technology challenges, so to speak, that we have to overcome, but that's where we're moving to. So you don't have 14 choices in kindergarten, as was indicated before, but instead you would have a more reasonable number, like five or six, but still retain that opportunity for a parent to make some selection within that, in that school, because there is good that comes out of competition, and I think we want to preserve those elements. And, you know, if you go pure neighborhood, sometimes you see that, but competition has helped us in, in some ways, where we have a, a pretty massive reduction in the number of schools and differentiated accountability. We really, this year, should be zero, but because of a lagging indicator of our graduation rate at Eastleigh County, it's, it has remained there for one extra year, but we're pretty confident it'll come out of, out of that. Other districts have experienced continued concerns because they've had to deal with that, and they haven't had as much ability to, to work with some of those student assignment variables that we have in the school district. However, I know there are definitely some things that we can do to improve ride time and reduce costs from a transportation perspective. And lastly, when it comes to the school bus stop issue, I want to commend everybody's efforts, you know, from the Rotarians to the Lights For Layla. You know, I think these are the types of things that we need. Hopefully, what we can do is work with our municipalities to establish some safer, more permanent bus stops where we know that we're not going to have a lot of change. There are some of those. There are also ones that we do because of our mobility. There will be some need to do some changes, but in the meantime, I think we can, we can work towards some more permanent solutions with our, the help of our municipalities to include, hopefully, the sidewalks and, and lighting and so forth. And finally, I, I know that the, the bus stop change issue was raised here. In my understanding, we have done that type of thing in the past, when we had a situation where we needed to change a bus stop because of something that occurred in and around the area of that bus stop, including a tragedy like, like we have seen here. And my understanding is that, you know, staff is looking to do, do that, so hopefully we'll get an update from what we heard this evening. That would, that would be a positive outcome in that case. So that's all the comments I have relative to that. Thank you.
Okay. And I failed to mention Mr. Shadlik. Thank you for the offer as well and the program. And Dr. Atkins, I don't know how, if you can pass that on to staff. It sounds like a great opportunity to support Americanism in our country and our schools. So, Mr. Shadlik, you, you left a card. Someone will get in touch with you then about that. Okay? Thank you. I believe I've covered everyone. Okay, we'll move on to consent items to be voted on. Approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed are under consent, is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the materials. We have an opportunity to talk with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of the items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing in action agenda. Board members, are there any action, agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Ms. Giovinelli?
I have two. G1, approval of personnel recommendations, and I7, ratification of agreement for the purchase of 10-acre parcel on Block Lane within the Village of Estero.
Ms. Patrica?
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
I actually have the same two as Ms. Giovinelli. G1, which is personnel recommendations, and I'm going to add that I'm particularly looking at the piece that is administrative personnel recommendations, and also I7 about land in Estero, next to Estero High School.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of the polls?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Fisher or Ms. Giovinelli?
Hold on.
Was that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Giovinelli, please record your vote.
Hold on.
I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, please record your vote. Okay, unfinished business or table items, we have actually two, and that is G1 and I7. Dr. Atkins, please, yeah, I'll read it. Please read your recommendation for pulled items.
Yes, Madam Chair. First item is approval of general personnel recommendation, including administrative, certificated, support, substitute staff, field appointments, and annual reappointments.
We do one at a time?
No, you just, that's his recommendation. You need a, you need a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion for the pulled item?
So moved.
Ms. Jordan and?
Morgan.
Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan and Ms. Vaughn. Okay, items have been moved and seconded.
No, no, yeah, go ahead.
No, did I do something?
No.
Oh, okay.
Discussion, isn't it?
Right, is there a discussion?
Yes, so I actually, the reason why I'm pulling this is because my concern was that the CFO position was not advertised at all, and I don't think that, that is transparent. So I think that it's, it should have been advertised, especially now since we've got the new market rate. I think we would pull in a lot more candidates, qualified applicants, and I think that we didn't give that opportunity to others. And I'm just concerned over that and what the public and the people would say about that.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I will add that I think it behooves us as a district with a budget as large as our budget, that when we're looking for a chief of operate, of chief of financials, that even though I have no doubt that Dr. Decemore has, well, definitely has the experience here in the district, and that she has credentials, you never know what's out there that actually has better and stronger credentials and could do a better job for the district. And so when I learned that this had not been advertised nationally, I was very disappointed with that, that we at least didn't have comparisons. The information that I received is that as soon as Ms. Dec, or Dr. Decemore indicated that she was interested in coming back to the school district upon the resignation of Mr. Greg Blerton, that Superintendent Atkins told HR department to go ahead and just not worry about advertising it beyond our district webpage. And frankly, that, that concerns me.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, if I may. Attorney Dotick, what, what are the reasons, if any legally, that the board could disapprove a recommendation to hire an employee?
Sure. The statute requires good cause, and other than having good, absent good cause, it is the responsibility of the school board to appoint personnel, not to select persons. So there, the board's role is to appoint individuals recommended by the superintendent absent good cause. Good cause is defined by someone that is morally or professionally disqualified. The second part of that means that they don't meet the qualifications for the position.
All right. I see your hand up, but I've got a couple more things I'd like to say. First of all, I know I've said publicly before, Dr. Atkins, that I've been impressed and frustrated by your hiring processes, because you are incredibly deliberate, but ultimately make a very, very good hire in the end. Thankfully, you didn't have to be deliberate on this one, because Dr. Decemore's was willing to come back to the district. And I say willing in all caps, because it wasn't easy sometimes when you were here. Dr. Decemore, I saw you at the back of the, the board meeting room tonight, and when I caught a glimpse of you, I had a big smile on my face, because I believe this is where you belong. I believe the students of the school district of Lee County need you. They need your leadership. I'm grateful that you came back. I think you're eminently qualified. I have absolutely no concerns whatsoever with how the hiring process took place, and I, if I were a hugger, I would welcome, welcome you back with open arms. I am not, not a hugger, so I'm not going to do that, but, you know, we, we've talked a lot in, with HR about building a bench. This is the strongest bench that I've seen in, for the superintendent in a very long time. So welcome back. I'm excited to work with you. Those are my comments.
Well, what I would say, first of all, A, it was advertised, B, my job is to find, I think, the, the most qualified person for the position. And I know that I have done that in this election. Dr. Decemore's not a single doubt in my mind. While I understand some of the board's concern, those of us who know Dr. Decemore's know that she's absolutely the most qualified person to, to do this. She has already built up the trust. She has already built up good ethics and moral character. We all know her to be that. She's built the relationships among our principals, our support staff, our teachers, and our administrative team. No one else, I don't care if you go across the United States, no one else is going to be able to do that like I believe she can. I do not have to advertise these positions. I've seen superintendents come in and appoint their teams. This is my recommendation, because I think this is by far the best person for the position. And, and I understand where you're all coming from. However, in all due respect... you're all coming from. However, in all due respect, I really believe that to go through a continuation of that process would be the wrong, it would send the wrong message. It would also, you would, I have been on these interviews where it's a dog and pony show, where the board has already figured out who they wanted, and we wanted to go through and waste everyone else's time, and that's the case of superintendent searches. But this is a case where it was advertised, but when she did indicate, after it had been advertised, that she was interested in coming back, then we opened up those discussions and thankfully, I think, came to a good agreement. I think you will be more than pleased with her performance once she comes back to the district and gets started. I'm disappointed to have to defend this one, but because of who it is, I hate to see us go through this. But I will absolutely tell you that it is, there is no wavering in this recommendation for Dr. Decemore. I don't think you could find a finer individual to fill the position of CFO. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple things. I know my colleague asked Mr. Dodeg to read in black and white what it says, but I view the policy that she mentioned in a broader sense, because it is the duty of the elected school board members to ensure, and especially when we're talking about a financial position, to ensure that the best candidates are considered when it comes time, especially to hire our administrative levels. And I am not saying that I won't support Dr. Decemore in this, because I know that she is qualified, but I think, first of all, I wanted to bring it up for discussion, because I think it sets a very dangerous precedent that we don't advertise nationally, especially for our chief position. Now, Dr. Atkins, obviously you have a different view on it, but that's my view, that our chief positions are advertised nationally, and we do get to see, because we're, you know, as elected officials, it's our fiduciary duty, to look out for the district. When we're done with this, I actually, my concern with pulling this wasn't so much Dr. Decemore. I just thought that I would add, since Ms. Giovinelli brought it up, I thought that I would add my concern that we just did locally and stopped there, because I do want to talk about Mr. John Franklin in depth, but that's just my opinion on it.
Can I make a comment on that as well? I have no doubt personally that Dr. Decemore can do the job, and it's not, I think the discussion, in my mind, is not about a personality or an individual. It's more so, to me, about a process. And I honestly believe, and when we have our workshop next week I want to put forth, that in future, when we pull up on our consent items, and it's only the person's name, and their department, and their title, to me, to say yes, I vote for that, and not know all of the underlying parts of it, and so I'm going to put forth for discussion, that in positions that are over 100,000, that we have more information, such as, you know, the search procedures, the number of applicants, the finalists, that type of thing. I'm also interested in, you know, knowing all the, if there is any contractual, or if there's anything else. I just believe, even for the posterity of our minutes, to have more information in there, so that if you look at it, or someone else says, well, you know, who is this person, that it's right there. Yes.
I understand, but again, you know, we've talked about roles. And, you know, if I'm going to do this job, then what part of that job is that I have the opportunity to select my team. Yes, sir, I do. And you have the opportunity to select me and the board attorney. And so in this case, I understand, and I think you'll look at my track record, I've repeatedly gone nationwide on these searches. We've had recruitment firms. We've done national searches. I've brought in a lot of people from other places. But in this case, I knew the performance of this individual, and I think it would be disingenuous to the other applicants and the process for me to go through what I think would be the motions, of putting everybody through that, just to come to the conclusion that Dr. Decemore would be the best candidate, because I know she would rise above all others. She's got experience in the position, successful experience in the position, has the relationships established, has the credentials, everything that you would be looking for. And it would be impossible, in my opinion, to come in with a candidate that would have superior credentials, that could hit the ground running and give the district what it needs right now. I need a loyal, hardworking, ethical member of the team who knows this district and knows how to be a high-quality CFO. We have that. Why would we waste time, resources, and again, not be, you know, respectful of even the process, and put people through something that would be, you know, just really, I think, a mockery of what a true process should be. Now, going back to Chief Operations Officer, and this is where I start to aggravate Ms. Patrika, is where I do go through and vet candidates, and re-advertise, and go get a recruiting firm, and all these things to, because if I don't see that locally, then I take the time to go nationally. And again, I've got that track record to prove it. So, other superintendents of our school district have been allowed to just bring people with no vetting process in whatsoever. Many of them have been able to do that, quite frankly. And, you know, but I've advertised these positions, and we've selected what I know is the best candidate.
And honestly, I don't think we're arguing over Dr. Decemore's. What I'm talking about is more the process going forward. Ms. Giovinelli?
And so, Madam Chair, and so was I. I mean, if you think, what did I say?
No, and that's what I'm saying. We are agreeing on certain parts of this. That's all I'm saying. Yes.
And I want to be clear. I'm not arguing over Dr. Decemore's either, at all. In fact, I respect her, and I welcome her back. So that's not my question. My question was the process. Second of all, my question is actually making sure that Dr. Atkins is picking the right people for the bus, on his bus, because I can name a list, Mr. Law, Blerton, Mora, Deming, Decemore, Cody, all these people left. His candidate is very, his cabinet is very slim, and that is what I'm concerned with, is your cabinet is very slim. And I want to make sure you are picking the right people for you and this district.
Ms. Morgan had her hand up.
I'm disappointed we're having this conversation now. So, when did Mr. Blerton announce he was leaving, and when did you advertise the position?
I want to say Mr. Blerton probably announced sometime in February, and it was advertised late February, March.
Okay, so we are seven weeks into a process. During that seven weeks, once a week, you have met with each one of us and talked about this. At some point, any board member who was discomforted by the process should have brought it to the full board for a discussion before it showed up on the consent agenda, and we had this conversation. So, I just want to say that I think we're still working on how we try to do our business, and I think this is an indication where I don't believe we have done justice to you, or to ourselves as a governing team, in the way that this is being handled. And I want to say to Dr. Decemore, I was going to say this at the end, welcome home. You belong here, and I'm so excited to have you back. You know that.
Ms. Fisher?
So, again, following Mrs. Morgan, our role is clear, and getting involved in Personnel Matters is not part of the responsibility of board members. That's the superintendent's job. And I, you know, I have some things that I want to say at the end of the meeting, but this is one of them. There's a book that I got when they still did things offline when I first got on the board, and it's To Do or Not to Do. Do not get involved in Personnel Matters. You know, our role is clear in the statutes, so we should not be having this conversation. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that I believe it was at the last meeting that Dr. Atkins and I had, that we were still, I was still questioning whether Dr. Decemore was coming on the two- or three-year contract that she had initially asked for. And, you know, one time, you told me that Mr. Brian Williams, our staff attorney, was taking a look to see whether that was even legal, whether that was something he would recommend, which led me to believe that you were considering Dr. Decemore for a two- or three-year contract, which is what she was asking for. So, from what Ms. Morgan said, yes, I had discussions with Dr. Atkins on this. And again, I don't think there's a problem with Dr. Decemore. I hear what some of the other board members who have been on this board longer are saying, and things change. And I'm not sure who wrote the book, but sometimes you have to rewrite the book to get things right, and we're not always right on Personnel Matters, because I remember just a few weeks ago, when several of us questioned the way that two spots in the diversity area were written, and as a board, we came together and said, no, we need somebody with experience, and we need somebody and/or training in these things. So, as a board, it's not unheard of, and to me, just because prior superintendents, who are no longer here, decided that they were just going to bring in whoever without vetting, that doesn't mean that things can't change. And I'm not talking about for every little position. I'm talking about for the upper-level positions that really determine the financial stability, and the transparency, and the public trust for this school district.
Yes, ma'am.
And...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have an obligation for oversight, and this is just all, that's all this is, is oversight. And that's something that you said to me the other day. So, I mean, oversight, and that's just all, for me, I just want to be transparent, and that's where I'm leaving it. And actually, I was worried about the two-to-three-year contract. That was the last communication I had with Dr. Atkins, and I had asked for this prior to yesterday morning, and I never received the contract, but I'm told she's employed through, like all the other employees, until June 30th. So, I'm good with that. So, that's all, I'm just, clarification.
May I respond to Ms. Giovinelli?
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead. All I was saying was, it's in the statute. It's the law. And we also, besides oversight, we uphold the Constitution and the law. We swear to do that. So, we don't need to step outside, you know, get over the line. And that has been a consistent problem with our board in recent months, and we really need to make sure that we know what we're talking about before we ask those questions. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins?
Pointed out the one thing, it is the statute that we are following. The other piece is relative to multi-year contract, everything that has been stated here is true. Mr. Williams was looking into that, as I communicated to all of you. You know, he even, to my knowledge, I believe, even put something out on listserv, and we were working toward that, and I said if that were something that would come to fruition, that I would bring that back to you, let you know that was definitely the case. He was unable to do that, to find a comparable district that did that. I did have the discussion with Dr. Decemore's relative to that, and that's where we are today. But having stated that, you know, I do want to say it again, that this is an exceptional, extraordinary appointment in my tenure here in this job, and as far as I'm concerned, as a superintendent, 99% of these, and I'm making up that number, but the vast majority of these appointments that I make at this level go with a national search. And in some cases, they have to go with, in the last two, like operations, and with our chief academic officer, have to go with a recruitment firm. You know, so we're going to extraordinary lengths. So, to make it, you know, I mean, to be honest, the majority of appointments follow that process. This one did not. And so to pull it aside and pick on the process here, I don't think is fair to the track record overall, in terms of following the HR process, in terms of how we operate within the school district.
I think, personally, I think the hiccup in it was the three-year contract. It was something that has not been done. It would have been out of the ordinary, and I believe, if I'm correct, that yourself and the attorney are the only ones that have that. And I had spoken to you about it as well, because there was a concern of creating something that hadn't happened before, and it might have caused a tidal wave for other people to want the same thing. So that, and I talked to you about that concern. So, all I'm saying, if, I'm sure if we had been told when we were talking to you that that was off the table, then there would not have been, you know, an issue, at least on my part. And again, this is not personal against Dr. Decemore at all. It's about the process. And I know the three-year part, I only found out through the email, I think, yesterday, that that was off the table. So, that was my concern about it. Other comments? Okay, so please direct me as to...
Well, I heard Ms. Vaughn talk about...
Yeah.
One of the other issues.
Yes. When I pulled this item, the person that I really wanted to talk about was the candidate for Transportation Services Director, Mr. John Franklin. Mr. Franklin was, before he came into his present position in the Atlanta Public Schools, he was manager of transportation in Hillsborough County, Florida. And during his tenure there, there was a very, very disturbing set of circumstances that happened. And in a nutshell, what happened was, there was a young child, a little girl in a wheelchair. It was a child with disability, and she died on one of the buses. And the parents sued the district eventually, and this was not just something made up, because there was an $800,000 settlement in this. The part that I had some pause about and a big concern, and yes, I have talked with Dr. Atkins and Dr. Pruitt about this, and so they know that I've been concerned about this all along, and I've given it a lot of thought, and I've gone back twice to read the deposition. Now, again, I'm not just going on old newspaper articles, although I did read the articles, but I actually read the deposition with his testimony, okay? And in it, one thing that bothered me was, here he was in this position, and he demonstrated a lack of knowledge of key protections. I'm talking about key laws that protect children with disabilities. I'm talking about key laws that protect children with disabilities. Okay? That, that was the first thing. The second thing that bothered me was that there was a demonstrated lack of training by the, both the attendant and the bus driver on that particular bus where the child died. Now, of course, there was video on the bus, and Mr. Franklin, one of the things is, he would not release the video to local law enforcement until they gave him a subpoena. And the thing that was most shocking about this, and, and Dr. Atkins, I remember talking to you about this, was the fact that apparently the superintendent of Hillsborough did not learn about this incident until much later. That it, it seemed like Mr. Franklin helped to keep this whole incident on the QT, and that the school district's position was that the little girl had a debilitating condition, and that's what caused her death. But when the video was released, because of the time span, it was pretty obvious that that was not the case. Now, that's not what I'm basing my major concern on, not specifically those things, because hopefully Mr. Franklin has grown in his knowledge of buses and transportation, and especially about children with disabilities and the special needs that they have on our buses. What concerns me the most is, we're a district that's really, really working on transparency. And I feel like he, he was part of something that happened in Hillsborough that had a lack of transparency. And that's one major concern, that do we really want to bring this kind of an individual into our school system? And I think, secondly, it speaks to a question of character of, of this man. And I pondered this, and, and I've heard the arguments, and it just, I, I will not be supporting his nomination. And I may be the only one, I don't care, but it's just, it went to my gut, and it really bothered me, and I think it especially bothered me in light of the fact that, you know, we've just had children, not on a bus, but we've just had some tragedies in, in our school district. So, one thing that I would, I would like to do, because I am not going to support this nomination, is, if the Board would like to do this, is to separate these two candidates out and vote separately. It's just a suggestion.
Comments, Ms. Juvanelli?
My concern is the integrity of the district based on hiring him with this, with the stigma that surrounds him. And we have to be really careful right now with the situation that we're dealing with in our own situation here at, at the district from the recent deaths of our, the children. Safety is the utmost importance, and so, I just question the integrity of his hire.
I, I, I just, I'm trying really hard to, to not respond to what I consider to be just utter hyperbole. I, I sit at this Board table, week after week after week. For weeks now, this Board has been sitting on information that a member of this Board violated the law by sharing confidential information. We have been sitting on that information for weeks. We've done nothing about it, yet we claim we want to be transparent. If we want to be transparent, why aren't we saying how and why that happened?
Okay, Ken, we need to stick...
Instead, no, no, this is, this is directly related to this topic. Instead, we sit here and we question the superintendent's legal right to run this district. Mr. Dodick, does a lack of knowledge of laws in the past disqualify Mr. Franklin from this job?
As I said, good cause is defined as someone that is morally or professionally disqualified.
Does that professionally disqualify him?
He has the qualifications for the position, I, I assume. I'm not giving an opinion whether I know that or not. That's up to the superintendent. If you all think he doesn't have the qualification...
But does a lack of knowledge of laws in the past disqualify a current candidate for a job?
Well, it depends what the job is, right? Obviously, for an attorney...
For the job that he's being appointed to tonight.
Well, I think he has to have some familiarity with the laws regarding transportation, correct? I mean, I think that would be a qualification for the job.
Yes, and, and there's been indication tonight that there was a lack of knowledge in the past. Does that past lack of knowledge disqualify him today?
I don't know the man's qualifications, Ms. Patrica, so I am not going to... What I'm going to tell you is, good cause is defined as lacking professional qualifications or morally disqualified.
Okay, thank you for that non-legal opinion that you just provided from the table. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I, I can't, I cannot continue to work under these circumstances. We need to bring forth a policy that, that forces this Board to do its job instead of what we're doing. Recruitment and retention, recruitment and retention, recruitment and retention. He has deliberately found, deliberatively found, the best candidate for both of these positions, and we are publicly re, re, raking these people over the coals. Who wants to work for Lee County School District?
But that's not what we're doing, Ms. Patrica.
Yes, that, in, in my estimation, and in my opinion, Madam Chair, that is what we are doing here tonight.
Point of order, please.
Yes, we were discussing...
There was a point of order, right?
Oh, go ahead.
Who said that? You?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Please, this is not, this is not appropriate. This whole thing is not appropriate. We need to focus on the job that we have to do here tonight. I'll not sit here any longer and watch my colleagues argue.
Okay. Mr. Dodick, you mentioned morally was one of the, one of the, the points.
Yes.
And I believe that the moral issue is what was being brought up, but please go ahead.
Well, if I could elaborate on that a little bit, morally has, the courts have held that you can't just simply base your decision to find good cause on subjective community standards. Okay? There has to be some level of objectivity to that. I will tell you that the Department of Education defines immorality as conduct that is inconsistent with the standards of public conscience and good morals. It is conduct that brings the individual concerned or the education profess, profession into public disgrace or disrespect and impairs the individual's service in the community. That is the definition of immorality that's promulgated by DOE that governs instructional personnel, but we also use it for other individuals as well.
And would an $800,000 lawsuit constitute that?
In my opinion, no.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Shadley, please refrain from commenting. Thank you, yes.
Yeah, what, what I was going to add is that Ms. Patrica obviously didn't pay close attention to what I said earlier, because what I did was, I gave all of those facts. These are facts from the deposition as a background. And then I said, my concern is the fact that he contributed to a lack of transparency in the district, and that I thought his character would put him in the category of, you know, the public conscience and the fact that he was very reticent. He was reticent about even sharing that video with the police, which was a video that showed what really happened. And I see this clearly within our rights as a, as a school board member, and I, I see it as, as a moral issue. What I said before was background, and...
Okay. Ms. Jordan, and then I have a question to ask Mr. Dodick.
I also read the deposition, and what, how I read it to be is that he did not turn the tape over to the authorities without the request per statute. So, that was his job. He was following the procedures in which he was supposed to handle it. Also, when he was speaking about not knowing, he was, also had stated, because they asked him about IEPs, and he also had informed them that the ESE department tells them, he, they don't go to training, he does not go to training for that. He is told, and they are told, what each child needs. And also, I mean, it was definitely unfortunate that this would happen to any child, but in the deposition, it also stated that the child was deceased at the hospital. So, I mean, not that that makes a difference, we did lose, a child was lost. But there was 119 pages of that deposition, and I read all of that twice. So, I mean, it really depends on who's reading it and how we're interpreting that deposition, because I read the comments of the attorneys as well.
Before you speak, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Dodick, can I ask one question?
Sure.
The question was on the floor as to whether we can subgrade the two, or is it one consent item, it's either all or nothing?
Well, as you did a couple of weeks ago, I mean, you can amend the motion. Is, I, I think you're, you're familiar with having done that two weeks ago when I wasn't here, so...
Yes.
That would be one way to handle this.
Okay. And, Dr. Atkins, you want to make a comment? Anyone else? And then I would like to...
But can I just reiterate that the Board needs good cause to reject a superintendent's recommendation? I, I want you to be aware of that.
So, basically, you're saying that either way, whether we vote yea or nay, it's, everything is, is just going to happen, so it really doesn't make any difference?
Well, I don't know that. I don't know how people are going to vote, so I, I just want you to understand the standard to reject a superintendent's recommendation, that's all.
Okay. I'm not sure what to do. Do we make a motion to separate the two?
I think Dr. Atkins...
Dr. Atkins, go ahead.
Again, when we evaluate staff, there is a pretty lengthy process that Human Resources goes through to do that. And in this case, they certainly did an extensive background search. They read the deposition and all of the articles. They went and got references. The references from Atlanta and the reference from, from Hillsborough were all excellent and spoke to this man's character. So, these are individuals who have worked with this individual in the past and have put in writing, went on record as stating that this man is of good character, that he did perform well in Hillsborough, and that he is still in good standing in Atlanta. He's been, he was San Antonio, I believe, Hillsborough, and then Atlanta, and did long tenures in those school districts. To get a candidate here with what we pay and with, with that level of experience, and I think that, that compensation, having been improved, did help in this, in this case, I can't speak for him, but we didn't have a candidate that had that level of experience. We did the screening. Human Resources did all of that stuff, so it's not just reading the articles and the deposition and making a decision. They interviewed him, we interviewed him. They did the background checks. They did all of that, talking to the, the references extensively. To, before, they put forward any recommendation, they had a diverse team at the table. So, it wasn't just, you know, a, a couple people around the table that made this recommendation. You know, they had to go through a process where multiple people interviewed them and came to consensus around this individual. We even had the, the union at the table at, at this one for input, because it's such with Spout Transportation Labor Management, they're involved in the day-to-day activities of, of transportation. So, it is not, without a lot of extensive work going into it, and, and as far as the background, we don't go at it without all of this work before bringing a recommendation forward to this Board. So, it, it is not something that I ever take lightly. We do our homework, so to speak. And I do think there are multiple interpretations of, of some of that, but if you look at what do we expect a transportation director to do, I mean, he, he is expected to transport students, and, and this is an individual works in the Atlanta Public School District and works in Hillsborough. These are complex systems. And he's been able to do that successfully, as indicated by his supervisors. And, and therefore, again, this is not a process we take lightly, and, and I, again, believe that this is the best candidate based on that process.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to separate out? If not, we will go ahead with the motion as it is stated.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to separate Mr. Franklin from our vote on this consent item.
Hey, so, let me just give some advice.
G1.
What I think she's proposing is a motion to divide, okay, the question, which is, needs a second but is not debatable.
Right.
Okay. So...
Would anyone like to second?
You've heard the motion, it needs a second, and then...
I'll second it.
Okay. So, it's been moved in second, there's no further discussion, now we, we take the vote?
Correct.
On the new separation out, correct?
To divide.
To divide? Yes?
Take, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Call the question on, the motion to... Is, is, is there a majority to divide the question, is the first motion?
And Susan, do we do that online, or we just do it verbally? Okay. All right, so, what's on the table is a motion to divide the two administrative positions for vote.
No, 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 let me just make it clear. What is, what you're dividing out is simply taking Mr. Franklin out of the main motion, which is all of the approval of, of the, of the Personnel Recommendations.
Right.
It's not just administrative that you're approving, you're approving all of them. So, that includes instructional and non-instructional. They remain the same with the exception of Mr. Franklin, who you're dividing out of it.
And is there a separate vote for Mr. Franklin?
There will be, if, if this motion to divide passes.
Right, okay, so...
So, call the vote.
Okay, I call the vote then for dividing out...
Yes.
The two administrative pieces.
No.
For taking, pulling Mr. Franklin out of the whole process.
Correct. Not of the whole process, just out of the main motion, correct?
Um, and do I call individually?
It doesn't, it's up to you, yes.
Can we just, raise your hand, please, if you are voting yes to remove Mr. Franklin from...
No, to divide the motion.
Divide the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, three. All those against?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, the divide does not happen, we need to move on to the original...
Main motion.
Main motion, which is all of the, the consent item is everyone...
Well, Dr. Atkins can read his, if you can read your recommendation again.
Yes, Madam Chair, approval of the general personnel recommendations, including administrative certificated support, substitute staff, out-of-field appointments, and annual reappointments.
Okay, and...
Call the vote, you already had a motion and a second.
Okay. All of those, and do we do that online, Susan?
Verbal, please.
Verbal, okay. All in favor? Ms. Fisher? Are you...
Signify by saying aye. See who says aye.
Just signify by saying aye, then.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. All right.
So, the motion carries five-two.
Right, yes.
Okay, there was one other poll. Which was item...
I-7.
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 So, the reason why I pulled this item is because of...
Make a motion.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we haven't made a motion yet, have we? Motion...
No, Dr. Atkins needs to read, reads, needs to read his recommendation, I'm sorry.
I'm getting so tired.
Ratification of the agreement to purchase land in the amount of $2,500,000. Ratification of the agreement to purchase land in the amount of $2,500,000 from Ronald E. Newquist and Terry C. Newquist as trustees of the Newquest, Newquist Family Trust for 10 acres of block lane within the Village of Astero, and approval of attorney fees, appraisal fees, due diligence, and closing costs estimated at $170,933 for a total cost of $2,670,933. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all necessary documents.
Motion.
Motion is on the floor.
No, you have to take it, someone has to move that recommendation.
I move to pull this for discussion.
I don't know, but some, before you have discussion, there has to be a motion of...
There has to be a motion about it.
I think Ms. Morgan raised her hand to move.
I, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Okay, so moved in second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Thank you. Okay, so I pulled this item only because this is another example of which, of which I wish we had been briefed on, because we sold property and I want the community to be, we sold 10 acres, and now we're buying 10 acres near, near there, and I think that the community just needs to be up to speed on this. That's, that's all, it's, this is another, just a transparency issue for me, because I, I know we sold this property, 10 acres for $700,000, now we're buying another 10 acres for two, two and a half million. We're also paying a realtor fee of $100,000 that, to me, is, is a waste, because it wasn't listed, and we, we could have, our in-house attorney could have sent a letter to the neighbor and purchased the property. Why are we paying $100,000 in commission for no reason? We don't have to be paying that. The seller typically pays that. I've talked to all my commercial realtor friends, and that's not typical for the buyer to be paying the real estate commission for, that's not necessary. And I am concerned over spending $100,000 that could be towards this $2.5 million property. And that's my concern. And if I was briefed on it, I could have asked all these questions, and it wouldn't be at the table.
Other comments?
Oh.
Yes?
Yeah, I mostly had questions on this, and I submitted those questions last Friday late afternoon to the superintendent, and I believe I got the answers maybe this morning from, I think, Dr. Carlin, I think, sent, sent, sent those. And it answered some of my questions on it, and mostly, I had questions because I wasn't sure if I was going to be in favor or not in favor of it, depending, and there's still a few things. One of the things was, finally got to see the land use report, and I was not, never briefed on this, it was never, I mean, individually at our meetings, that one of the findings was that the building of what we talked about, the elementary school, or K-8, or middle school, it could possibly be done, but it was tight, and so that we would be looking for more available land, that, that was one thing. I did wonder about the prior, and I didn't know about the prior ownership of the land, I just found that out after doing some digging online. I know that it wasn't going to be buildable, but I wondered if, considering our, our push in this area, especially for environmental education, if this wouldn't have been a really prime spot to advance environmental concerns, you know, something, an academy, perhaps. And then the third thing is, I'm, I didn't get a good answer this morning about what prior agreements, either more formalized or tacit agreements, we have with the Village of Astero. There were some, one of the newspaper articles that I read, there were statements, I believe it was from Mr. Betos in the Village of Astero, and it made it seem like, well, we had already, as a school district, come together with the village, and, and this is something that I was unaware of. So, I just wanted to get, before I voted blindly on something, I wanted to get answers to the questions that I posed last Friday, and I couldn't pose them earlier, because, frankly, until I saw the board docs and had a chance to read those, I think, a week ago, or six days ago on Wednesday, I didn't know anything about this deal.
Well, if I could have an opportunity to respond?
Yes.
We had an opportunity today in a briefing where we could have asked some of these questions and gotten answers then, but we chose to wait until this evening, which I find, again, disappointing. A part of, and, and I will say it, part of the responsibility of a board member, I can't read minds, you have to ask questions. And I am, there's not any way humanly possible that I'm going to be able to anticipate everything that you need to know. There is a lot going on in a district this size. So, I would appreciate some patience as we work through this, but I think that in, in the case today, we had Scott that was up at the table, talking about land acquisitions would have been a wonderful opportunity to get a nice answer to those questions. I thought the answers were, the question, answers were reasonable and addressed the, the questions that you had put out, as did with Ms. Giavennelli, but now I'm finding out that wasn't the case. Now, and as it relates to this piece of property, the first piece of property was further away from the Astero campus. So, it could not, it's not adjacent to the campus, it's further away, it's wetlands. It's not of any use to us, it would behoove us, it was in our best interest as a school district to sell that piece of property. The, the piece of property that is in question today is adjacent to the Astero property, and, and would, as Mr. Rickembacker indicated, would be a good location for this village, this academic village concept that we have talked about. We do have a memorandum of understanding with the Village of Astero, and part of that memorandum of understanding is that we jointly look at the, the location of educational facilities relative to their municipal plan, which is what we've done. Board members have had discussions with Mr. Betos, Mr. Obersky has had discussions with Mr. Betos and the Village Council. We believe that this is very consistent with what they are trying to do in terms of this academic village concept. This is a, will be, hopefully, a K-8 to begin with, and then eventually evolve into a tri-campus with an elementary and middle school and a high school there. In addition to that, we are also, we can utilize 10 acres to make this work, but we could, we are also in the process, as was indicated in the email earlier, we are trying to also get an additional five acres adjacent to, to really have a nice piece of property to put this academic village concept on. So, all of that information, you know, is, is the reason why we are, I am recommending the purchase of this piece of property, it makes sense. Moving further, we are going to continue to have discussions with the Village of Astero and, hopefully, the county commissioners about other joint-use facilities, parks, recreation facilities, that can be used by all three municipalities, the school district, the Village of Astero, and, and the county. So, that's why we're putting this on, on the table.
Yes.
I have worked very closely with Nick Betos, and I'm going to use this opportunity to give a shout out to Nick, and, excuse me, his work on this. Nick was the very first mayor of Astero, and he has made education in the village sort of his passion, and it's going to be the legacy that he leaves. And as a result of the memorandum of understanding with the village, more village residents are in our schools and engaged in our schools and engaged with our students than we've ever seen before. And the level, I, I know that we live in two different areas, Ms. Giavennelli, but I have gotten nothing but absolutely positive, wonderful feedback surrounding the purchase of this land and the potential for an education village within, within the Village of Astero. Of course, that's where I live, and most of my contemporaries are parents, and they are, the excitement is, I mean, it's, it's literally over the top. And I think that we learned with Benita that it's very important to be engaged, not just with surrounding communities, but with the, the government municipality, where we are locating a school, to make sure that we're doing in accordance with their plans. So, this, this memorandum of understanding, which is, you know, it was signed in large fashion, there was a, a big, you know, signing ceremony, and it was very exciting, this is absolutely in, in line with that. And I, I would invite you to come to one of our task force meetings, so that you can see how engaged the principals are, and how engaged the mayor is, or the former mayor is, and how just genuinely committed he is to bettering education for students who are, are served by Astero schools.
Ms. Giavennelli, and then Ms. Vaughn.
My concern is, are, are we sure going to be able to get the five, I didn't know anything about the five acres until this morning, until the email, so I knew nothing about additional five acres. I was told by many contractors that 10 acres is not large enough to build a, an elementary school, so I was concerned over that. So, you have to understand, like I said, if I was briefed on this, I would understand better, and that is one of my biggest questions. I know we're selling 80 acres down the street at, off of, on Three Oaks Elementary, by the post office there. So, that's what, so I, just trying to understand the need, and exactly, and what if we don't get that five acres? Then what are we doing with this 10 acres? I just want to make sure that we're making the right decisions. And for vision for 2030, we need to know where we're putting these schools and have a plan, and the community to be involved, and everybody to know where these are going to be, including myself.
Well, just to respond, my understanding, I, I really believe that Scott Rickembacker did talk to us about this issue in a briefing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, you know, as far as not understanding and not being briefed, we continue, he has, Scott, I don't know if you want to come up and respond to that, but, but that is why I put him on every one of our briefing agendas, is so you get it right from the expert. And, and the answer to the 10 acres is, and he can affirm this, is yes, we can build these facilities without the five acres, but we would rather build it with the five acres, and, and anyway, you...
Rick, let me give you a little bit of history. The scrub 10 acres were two five-acre parcels, and prior to my knowledge of the conversations with the Village of Astero, I believe the county had thoughts of creating this multiplex sports pavilion in that back acreage. So, when we were doing Benita Springs High School, they came to Dawn Hoff, who at that time was our property person, who's no longer with us, and made an offer, and we had a need for the traffic signals and the off-site roadwork on Imperial Parkway, so they basically provided a $700,000 purchase price for that scrub wetland, which we couldn't develop and was, in fact, like Dr. Atkins had said, at the, the back end of the parcel. The 10 acres, what we were commissioned to do, because obviously Dawn isn't here with us, so a lot of staff is pulling together to try and bring this all to fruition while the contracts are all in play, we hired an engineering firm who was part and parcel of that committee with the Village of Astero, and with Dan Obersky, the realtor, and we engaged him to take our prototype elementary school and our middle school and fit it on there. Now, I'm a skeptic, I'm sorry, I believe in community, but my commitment to Dr. Atkins was, is I'm not going to tell you that a 10-acre parcel of land is a good buy unless I know I can build you a school with an access road, with a bus access, and I could care less what the Village of Astero wants to do. Now, once we know that we can meet those student station seats that we need in the South Zone, you can have your political meetings with them and, and the, the collaboration, and make anything you want out of that, and I'm on board. But my obligation to you is, if we're going to need seats, and we're going to spend money, I have to produce those seats. So, the five acres, I believe, and I haven't seen a contract, but Dan Obersky's working in on that, we have a letter of commitment, I believe, with the property owner. And we have, I believe, another 30 or 45 days to do our due diligence studies, and then engage with a deposit in the contract. So, I've asked my engineer, following, hearing some of the comments, I was the one who answered some of your questions, Ms. Vaughn. The, I called the engineer, I said, Jason, I want you to tell me something. If I can't get the five acres, can I still fit our prototype elementary and middle school on the property behind Astero High, plus this 10 acres we want to buy? And the answer is yes, it's not going to be perfect. I'm not going to have the big play fields, I'm not going to have maybe a practice field at the high school, but could it be done? Yes, it could. But every indication right now is that that five acres is, is going to be there for the purchase.
Yes, ma'am. What I said was, before I voted on this, I just wanted to know more information. And as I said, I did send out on Friday late afternoon, asking these questions, and I found out the answers, although I still had a few questions. And perhaps, we could have addressed it with you, except that we probably would still be, this afternoon, earlier, we'd probably still be talking when the kids from Sanibel were singing, which may not be an excuse, but it's one I'm going to give. The, I taught at Astero High School for eight years. The Village of Astero is probably, that and, and Sanibel are probably our two stellar communities in terms of getting behind our schools. And I love that, because I come from a background of having taught for, actually, my whole, for 30 years in districts with community schools, and with communities that stood in the back. Now, Ms. Patrica mentioned, and also, I think, Dr. Atkins, well, the boards talked with Mr. Betos. Well, I never, I've never even met Mr. Betos. I found out about this by reading a news press article. Okay, so, I don't know when those discussions occurred. I am all for partnerships with our communities. I think that makes us stronger, and it makes them stronger, but I'm also for not voting blindly on anything. Thus, I'm supporting this tonight, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I'm saying one more time, I will never vote blindly on something that's, is a cost in, in the millions of dollars.
All right, other comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Rickembacker.
Thank you.
So, can we move on then to the vote on this item? The motion is on the table, it has been discussed, so we are at just the vote, am I correct?
Yes, call for the vote.
Okay, and call for the vote on item I-7. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries...
Oh, do opposed.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, opposed. Everybody raised their hands.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. All righty then. We're on to, included in the approval of the consent items in the agenda are resolutions proclaiming April 21st to 27th, 2019 Administrative Professionals Week, as well as April 22nd, 2019 as Earth Day. Before I turn it over to Dr. Atkins to introduce the administrators, Dr. Decimores, I would just personally like to say, congratulations, and welcome back. Dr. Atkins? Dr. Atkins, please introduce administrators in attendance with new assignment that were approved on the consent agenda.
We just did that, that was Dr. Decimores, and we're thrilled to have her back.
Okay. Okay, attorneys, recommendations, we have none, no public hearing, other business. Board members' reports, we will start with Ms. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli?
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Well, I, I think after this evening's meeting, I'm going to go ahead and talk a little bit about to do or not to do. I, I really want to thank everyone on this board for their service. It is not easy, being a public servant and having to answer to a multiple of inquiries. However, we have work to do in this district, and we are not moving forward because we are not working cohesively as a team. So, I would like to try one more... So I would like to try one more time to implore you to get the information that you need. And a few of the to do and not to do that I noticed here are, you know, visit schools and participate in your activities. Recognize the good things about your school system. Don't take things personally. Some decisions will go the way you want and some will not. That's just the way it is. Keep a sense of humor. Do understand that legally, individual board members have no more authority than any other system, citizen, but are accorded authority and power by those with whom they deal. We can only make decisions for this district as a majority of the team. We need to really focus on trying to get there. I don't really know what it's going to take. I'm stumped. I've never seen it like this in this district before. And we need to really put our own agendas to the side, focus on the mission, and try to work together. Each and every one of us has to be willing to take a step towards the center. Do be open to learning. Don't let your ego get in the way of good decision-making. Don't get involved in personnel matters. Our role is clear in the statute. Do be patient. Things don't happen overnight. I've been on this board over eight years. I'm still learning something new every day. And you learn more by listening, sometimes, than speaking. And so I'm just asking one more time, can we get together as a team or can we not? And I wanted to thank the Seahorse Corral from Sanibel for entertaining us this evening. I wanted to thank the people who came to speak about safety and other issues. And I also want to thank our staff who work incredibly hard and take a lot of extra time when we are asking questions in an untimely fashion and we are getting over that line and going into the superintendent's lane. It is incumbent on us to be oversight and policy setters, but it is not incumbent on us to do the job of the superintendent and his staff. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
Mary, I'd love to, Ms. Fisher, I'd love to borrow that book to read. Thank you for sharing that. And also, I would just, real quick, this weekend, I had the opportunity to join Best Buddies Friendship Walk at Merrimar, and it was really exceptional. There was a lot of people there. Everybody was very excited about being there, and it's about unity and bringing everybody together. So I thought that was really great. And then also with EDAC, I'm the chair of that, or the, I'm sorry, liaison, let's get that straight, liaison. And they've been working really hard and they will be bringing us, oh, there's some pictures, and they will be bringing some recommendations to the board at the next meeting for recruitment and retention, but they are truly working very hard. And then these are just some pictures of the walk, and also there's another picture up there that was from the art walk that our children had participated in. So we do have a lot of good things taking place in Lee County, and we really need to focus on some of those, you know? And sometimes it gets, you know, pushed aside, but we need to, you know, believe that we can do, do more. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot one thing. I just wanted to thank Allison for being with us tonight and hanging in there, even though she starts school at 7:00 a.m.
Almost done, Allison.
You have to be up in like three hours. Just be up in like three hours.
Okay, Ms. Vaughn.
I just wanted to make one response to Ms. Fisher. Mary, I appreciate your expertise and the time you've served on the board. However, to me, and I'm just going to put it out there to all of you on the board one more time, that my view is taking a step toward the center and coming together. I mean, that's what we do. We vote. And as you said, sometimes things will go the way you hoped they would go and other times they don't. And I'm sitting here just feeling good, feeling calm, and not upset or perturbed about it. It's the way of democracy. We cannot make progress unless we have some disagreements. And putting it out there for discussions, I don't see the problem with that. I think the community appreciates hearing some of these discussions. You know, some of them happen perhaps in an email, and I'm hoping more things will happen when I, when I hear things like from this evening, well, we've had this discussion with the village of Astero. I'm sorry I didn't have that, and I honestly do not like learning about things by having to dig through old copies of the news press archive. But anyway, my agenda is to make this school district the best that it can be. I have two grandchildren who go to school here. I was a part of this district for eight years, and I know I touched a lot of lives, and so I know how important teachers are and touching lives, I know that we're important in directing, in directing the governance of this district. And I may have a broader interpretation, and maybe sometimes I will challenge definitions like, what does it mean morality? And how fast do we need to get the information? And so I really do appreciate your expertise and what each of us, and we discussed this when we had our training, and by the way, where is the rest of that training? We haven't had any more training since that one time. A point was made that we each bring something to the board. And if it takes a couple of us being the ones that are the questioners, being the ones that play the devil's advocate, being the ones that are pushing the envelope, so to speak, so be it, I don't think that's out of our lane. And if I hear that one more time, never mind. I just, I'm tired of hearing that phrase.
Sir.
Oh, can't clap. So anyway, that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
I guess my comment is, in response to Ms. Fisher, we have a lot of work to do, and I agree. And, you know, however we can pull it together, got to do it. Because in my opinion, in seven years on this school board, we have never been in a better position to serve the kids in this district. Never. We have a vision. We have the right people on the team. We have action plans. Our job is to be reviewing those plans on a regular basis to make certain that the district is moving in the direction of our vision. That is our job. And I would agree that we are spending a lot of time not doing our job instead of doing what we need to do. And I worry that we are compromising our ability long-term to hire quality employees. I don't care whether it's the teaching level or at the cabinet level. If we're not doing our job, people aren't comfortable. And so those are my comments.
Thank you. Allison, it's your turn, my dear.
Well, I think you already pretty much know what I'm going to say.
I don't know.
I'm just really, really glad for this opportunity. It was really great to hear all of your concerns and how passionate you are about the welfare and the well-being of the students of this district. So I just thank you all for your service on this committee and for allowing me to be here.
Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We will get you home very quickly. Under an answer for one thing about the training, Dr. Carlin and I are working with Mr. Eady and trying to find the right time and all of that to continue with our training, but we are working on it. I feel like both sides of a conversation are necessary sometimes, and I think that's what people want to hear, is all sides of a discussion. Communication, and I've said this before, means agreeing to disagree. And in order to do that, we have to get our thoughts and feelings out. I honestly feel like we have, we are in a better place. I really do. We are discussing and agreeing to disagree, doing our votes, and we're, as far as I see it, we're doing our job. I think our issue is communication and transparency, like we've said many times. And with that, I want to, I've talked to the superintendent about this as well and also with Mr. Dotick. I think one of the things that's happening in the process should be our briefing meetings and if we need to, workshops in between, and then the action meeting. I think what's happening, sometimes it gets kind of fuzzy. We are doing the briefing meetings and some of those things do not move along to the next action meeting, or they get dropped, or other things get in there. And we can talk about it in our workshop, but I think we need to get that process a little tighter, because if we do have the briefings and there are other questions, we can have the workshop in between. When we get to the action meeting, we've already gotten our questions answered. And I think that's what the problem is. Somehow or another, we're not getting those questions taken care of so they don't happen in the action meeting. So we need to discuss that in our workshop and figure out how do we fix that piece? And if it means tightening up the schedule, however we do. I do want to say, I just want to say publicly with some of the things that have happened in the district recently, like the deep cuts in the schools, I personally sat through some meetings, but I was not aware of the deep, deep cuts that were going to happen in the schools. We heard about, you know, DRA and that there would be some cuts, but to the extent I was not aware that that was going to happen. The other thing, on a good note, on Thursday at 9:00, correct Lauren, at Lehigh Senior High School, we will have a rollout, a tax rollout event, and in which we will talk about some exciting ways that you, the public, can follow and see what we are doing with the tax money. I think I said from the first meeting we had on November 14th, my question was, how are we going to let the public know to come along this ride with us to see what we're doing, be transparent about the tax, and to know step by step? And I am very happy to say that the program that's going to be rolled out on Thursday will help to do that. And I am, you know, saying to the public to please follow, be there if you can, follow what we're doing so that you have your questions answered about your particular school that you're interested in or the district as a whole. That will be a very good, good program. I believe, one other thing that I need to say, I have tried since December to get some answers about the executive pay. I've gotten different things and different answers, and I'm requesting publicly to get the personnel action forms non-redacted, except for personal information for all of the executives that receive pay in December on the 21st. And I will send an email to follow this up as to receipt of that. Other than that, superintendent, I think you are, do you, I'm sorry, Mr. Dotick?
Nothing this evening. Well, just a couple of things. One, I would encourage you to use email because that's part of our process, and I think that makes it clear. You were going to sit down with Mr. Blart, and I offered up Ms. Letcher, so that's something that you can do relative to executive pay, but we can certainly, if you send that email to me, we'll be happy to provide that information. But, you know, that's what's helpful, because I quite honestly believe the request also changes, or at least there's mis, let me put it a better way, miscommunication between you and I in terms of what the request is. I know I had that discussion with Mr. Blart before he left, and then when he did talk to you, he just suggested sitting down with him so that he could answer your questions. Relative to the DRA, again, unfortunately, we have to, you know, address that again. But to say things like deep, deep cuts, we have to be careful about saying that. Because as I said before, 5.2 million is the cut of a $27 million compensation piece that we're putting towards salaries. So if you divide that over a number of schools and over a number of different areas, it's not as deep. As I indicated also before, when you have that DRA file that we've had to tweak and make changes to, you know, we are in the process now really of adding back when we look at a file. So just, I just say that just to be careful about our communication, because this is a process. So to say, I wasn't aware of the deep cuts, well, that's because I wouldn't consider what we're doing to be deep. Now, you may, it's relative, though, because I, you know, I have one perspective, you have another. But I think that, and either one of them is right. Okay? So let's just put it that way. But I would, but what I would say is that let's please be careful now with what we're saying, because I don't want to alarm people too much, because, you know, like I gave the example of the high school where staff has been working with what initially the high school principal thought was a very, very tough cut, you know, that would be considered a deep cut if that's what had actually happened. But after working with the budget department, I believe, and I'll look at Kelly, I believe that school principal is where she wants to be, you know, in terms of staffing, or at least she's, you know, she feels that she could make that work. And that's what we are trying to do with every one of these situations. And I just want to say to anybody watching this, you know, it's, you know, our employees work hard for us every single day, and I don't want to panic anyone unnecessarily. I was in this situation myself. I know what it feels like. I don't want to put somebody else in that situation. So I would encourage any teacher or employee, if you're in a school where the DRA allocation has been reduced, that work with your principal, work with human resources, work with staff, because the great thing about being in a growing school district is that there's opportunity in a school district, a growing district like us, to find additional opportunities if you're an effective or highly effective teacher or employee. And that's an important distinction. They're working with the assistant principals, you know, that, where we had, and again with that one, there's budget reductions, that's a smaller number, and then there's also performance issues that we have to address. And our job is, we have to address all of those. So, because what you do find is, the longer somebody's on a job, the more effective that they are, that they are on that job. A teacher is a great example, because the first year of being a teacher, you make incredible gains. That means that we've invested a lot in you. So if it didn't work out in this building, it probably will work out in another building. And so we're working with our principals to help make those types of transitions. So if, you know, I think one of the things we have to do, we set the tone for the district. And so when it relates to this issue and employees' lives, let's be as positive as we can and be real. You know, that's why we produce the videos to communicate out about the tentative agreement. And in my communication, I did address the DRA piece as well briefly. But I think those are important, you know, that's why I also made myself available to the media, is to try to again, send that message. Finally, you know, this evening, I just, I just have to say this. Finally, you know, this evening, I just, I just have to say this, communication, we're all responsible for communication. And so I would, I would ask that, you know, our staff, I've, I've never seen a staff working more diligently to try to answer questions. I can't anticipate everything, you know? And I know there's some big issues that you think, hey, you should've got that one, and maybe you're right. But we are trying to. I'm not, we're trying to be more transparent than we've ever been. So every individual board meeting with you all, those agendas are pretty standard, and we cover the same, you know, material. I am happy to look at, work with the chair on doing more in briefings. You know, this is, this is a different board. I have also had feedback that, you know, provide us white papers in advance and let us do our homework and then go with a, a much shorter version. So, you know, we're working with two different perspectives here, but I'll work with the chair to try to make sure that, that bigger items at least come to your attention, and then you can ask those questions. I don't, the questions don't bother me, it's more the, the timing, it's, it's more difficult to do it here. And, and also, there are things like this with the personnel stuff that, that I, and this is, again, my opinion, I just think we send the wrong message when we're having a debate about personnel at this table. Those are issues that, and you did raise the questions, but I, I also like the communication back that, hey, I'm satisfied with your answer, I'm done, or, or no, I need further discussion before we get here and start talking about it. And, you know, that's, that's all I would have. And then this last thing. This staff, you know, in terms of what we see in social media and other sources, has been really just pummeled. And I, and I have to tell you that this is an outstanding group of individuals, ethical, hard-working staff, and, and I find these, these things not only unfortunate, but just disgusting in, in my mind. And I, and I feel they should, you know, we need to stand up for them, because they work hard for this school district every single day. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And I, I just wanna echo that as well, and I think I do at every meeting and say thank you to the staff. Thank you for being here at nine o'clock at night. Anyway, thank you so much for all that you do and getting answers to things. Our next scheduled meeting is April 23rd. There'll be a board workshop at two o'clock immediately following briefing meeting and a regular school board meeting at six. We also have another workshop set for next week to kind of finalize our internal, in our internal auditor, I believe, and our attorney, our attorney piece, anyway. So look out for that. At this point, having no other bis-
So moved.
I'm sorry.
So moved. Second.
I guess we're done. Anybody wanna vote?
You have to vote.
We have to really vote.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Yeah, Kathleen.
Is it electronic? There we go. And we will have pluses and deltas in room D.